Good evening, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Rutland Town Planning Commission. I am Dana Peterson, serving as vice chair in place of Barbara Noisepolling this evening as we get the meeting started, and Barbara will be joining us. At this time, I would like us to join in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Dana?
Yes.
Just like you said, what I passed out was, I didn't know for sure what we would need, but I passed out a listing of all the streets, street names that are involved with this area.
Okay.
And it's the entire streets. So, I mean, on US Route 7 South, for instance, we may only have five parcels, and this here may have 35, but it's the entire sheet, so we could check them off, or however we're going to work with them. That's what it is.
And we'll talk about that, I think, in just a minute. First item of business, it is actually, usually give the time, and I think I was off, it was about 6:37 for the opening of the meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We do not have a sound system here, so I'm a little bit at a disadvantage if I can ask you to speak up a little louder than you might ordinarily do.
I'd be happy to speak as loudly as you'd like, Norman.
Yeah, and the louder it is, the more you can sound like you're yelling at me, and that makes you feel good. Makes me feel good, too.
Okay, thank you for letting us know, Norman.
Thank you.
We'll try to all speak up.
Thank you.
So, the first item on our agenda is to approve this evening's agenda, and so entertain a motion. I do have one thing in talking with Barbara that we should probably add as under Old Business if we have time, and that's follow-up on our transparency discussion, and that would be under Old Business. So, Bill, if you would make a note to include that.
What is that?
That's our discussion on the guidelines for however we're going to conduct business, and there's been some feedback about what we call those, so I'm calling it the Transparency Discussion. Okay. So, we'll add that under Old Business after the letter for the October 24th public meeting that we'll be addressing. So, with that addition, can I entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda for this evening?
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
Second, Andy. Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment? Don't see anybody from the public, but, okay. New business, the first item on the agenda is probably going to take a considerable amount of time, and that's the parcel mapping of the Moon Brook and Mussey Brook watersheds. And it may take us a few minutes, so please bear with us, for those of you who are viewing, as we set up our process for identifying the correct parcels. We've received a lot of information in the last 24 hours, and sorting that out and getting an orientation to the work that we need to do in terms of identifying the appropriate parcels, so that we can send out the letter to the affected residences, is going to take us a few minutes to get oriented. So, please bear with us as we begin this process. Howard, do you want to make a suggestion about our best way to proceed, given the wealth of information that we have received over the last two days?
I would think that we would, if we could start up in the northern part, the most northern part, and just start picking off each parcel, and actually checking them off on the spreadsheets that I handed out, that are by street. Those sheets are by street name, and you'll see they're in groups. You can find them one way or another, but I think we need to take each parcel and identify it on that spreadsheet and check it off.
So, perhaps I can recommend that we have someone, whose sole responsibility, or two people, are going to actually do the checking, while others look at the parcels and determine if they're affected. That way, we can make sure that there's coordination between those that are identified and what gets recorded on the spreadsheet.
So, will the person looking at the parcels know the address? Is that what we're saying?
I think what's going to happen is the person looking at the parcels will identify, with Howard's help, so Howard will probably do that, and then two people can probably check off the affected parcels on our spreadsheet.
By address or by parcel ID? That's what I'm thinking.
Well, I think we're going to have to convert from...
These are by name. We can figure it out. It can be by, by address is probably going to be the best way. I also have the town parcel maps here, which has the tax map numbers and everything on it, so if we need to dig a little deeper, we can look at those, the maps that are here.
For ease of efficiency, Howard, in terms, we have, it looks like we have potentially three tasks that we can all be involved in. I would suggest that we have somebody whose responsibility is to look at this, or a couple of people, so that they can double-check what is being relayed for information, so we can do this as efficiently as possible.
I think, we find one there, and we identify where it is, and they go just find it on the list and check it out.
So, do I have a couple of volunteers who would like to look at the list and be able, when the parcels or the addresses are identified, find them, and then check them off? And we should have, in the end, we should have one combined list. I mean, it doesn't matter if two people are working on something.
Exactly. How many ever list? We need one clean copy.
In the end, so, do I have two volunteers that would...
Yeah, I'll do. I'll do one.
Mary Beth, you want to?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay.
So, the rest of us go up there? Is that what it is?
Well, does somebody need to be manning the tax?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
Right, then everybody else can go up and...
I would think we can give, try to give it a shot, and try it, and see how it goes, just by picking a name up, you know, an address. It'll be like, well...
Why don't we try it? See what's happening? And then we'll take suggestions from those who are recording, and those who are calling out the identified parcels. Okay? So, we have, there are three of you now?
Yeah.
So, Mary Beth?
Oh, you two have it. I don't have it.
Do you want to do it?
No, I didn't bring a pen with me.
Oh, you didn't?
So, I'm out.
So, you can help us then, Andy.
I was going to say, for starters, could we just, there's a lot of streets that are totally in, right, totally in the zone?
No, no, right now, you bring up the names, right?
Andy has a question about...
We have certain streets that are completely in the zone, right? So, can't we just go through and just, everybody that has an address gets checked, right?
That would probably save a little bit of time.
A certain amount, anyway.
So, do we have that list, is that the 40, the list of 40 that we know that are in the proximal zone of...
They're going to be scattered throughout these lists.
They are, but we have those already.
We have a list, we have...
That's not by street, that wasn't what we were saying. We're saying that there's one street here.
There's certain, right, everybody on Victoria is in there, everybody on Hitsel is in there.
Okay, that's a different...
That was the question.
Yeah.
Do we know that? Do we know, do you know that, Howard?
We'll see, hopefully we'll see from the margin of that area here. If it shows it's all on there, check it out.
Okay.
Yep. We just got to work around the boundaries, I think, to pick the ones that we missed.
Oh, it's got the names on it. Okay. Should we start from...
Can we pull that down, so we can start from up?
The northernmost affected boundary, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, what happens if you put the watershed on now, Bill? Is it blocking it out?
The impaired one?
Yeah.
Pull it down, so we get to the top.
Looks like we start with, like, 134 Connor Drive.
All three of these.
So, is this by, is this alphabetical by road?
Well, they're by road. You can find them by roads here, if you look, there'll be, I don't know what number, Connor Drive. Connor Drive should be in here someplace.
Should be on the...
C-O-N-N-R?
C-O-N-N-R.
Maybe it's that.
These are by name, aren't they?
These are by name. It's interesting, we've got all these on Cold River.
I found it. Page 10.
No, they go, no, they're numerically in the...
Connor Drive, Connor Drive, Connor Drive.
Connor, Karen, and Town Line Road.
Where's Town Line Road?
I should have brought them in.
So, how do we find...
Connor Drive starts on page 10.
Yeah. So, this is that development, if you've got to turn left and...
Okay, so there are three addresses on Connor Drive.
Where are they?
Four.
Four?
This one. Oh, sorry.
Their driveway's on Connor.
Yeah, okay. So, there are four addresses on Connor. 103? No, it's on Karen.
Five.
No, it's just with the address of Connor.
Right.
And I saw these three, I didn't, I was scanning, but I didn't see that one. So, we have, we, actually, we do have, no, because this one's not affected.
Right.
So, we have four affected residences on Connor Drive. 103 Connor Drive, 106 Connor Drive, 134 Connor Drive, and 166 Connor Drive. 103, 106, 134, and 166.
So, what's happening to...
Are you all, team good?
We're good.
Yep, we got it.
So, what's happening to this one, I'm wondering, that's, I'm not sure if I...
So, that we have...
Maybe that goes with this here?
Maybe.
That's where our other maps will come in.
Okay. So, what else we have to do is we have to do Karen, is that correct? So, we have, true, we have quite a few on Karen Drive. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 addresses on Karen Drive. Those add, oops, sorry, it wasn't pulled over. We have 10. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. And those numbered sequentially, if that's helpful?
Well, that one's got a corner, too. So, this is the lowest number.
Okay, so it's 11, because we have a very small, so there are 11, starting with 334, 342, 368, 387, 392, 420, 450, 468, 485, 494, and 520.
That's 11. That's 11.
Slide the map a little bit to the left, Bill. I want to get up to, there you go, to Town Line Road. But yes, good, that one in the corner of Town Line Road, there's going to be some missing things here, I think, because, yeah, it's about, well, let, see, just put it here.
Yeah, because there's an address.
This is the one that shows, there's no name on it, but it's owned by this individual here.
Okay, and that's an effective property, right?
It's two parcels, either the backside of 484, Town Line Road, one, they're separate parcels, and then there's one, too.
This one?
No, no, no. Wrong side, wrong side.
To the left, to the left.
This one here? This is 690 Town Line Road.
And that's the one.
This one here?
That's the one that owns that piece.
Yeah.
That owns this one, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that's Town Line Road. So, we'll mark that as a two parcel? Because this doesn't have an address.
No, but it's just, it's just one parcel. They own, they own both.
Okay, so the next one that we drew for affected properties are Town Line? Does that make sense?
Yep, there's going to be that.
Okay, and so 690 Town Line Road, actually, that would be going in the opposite direction.
Oh, it's okay.
Yep.
It's the lowest.
Okay, this is going to go from highest to lowest, then? Will we go in, no? No, that's, oh, 690, yeah, they're going up, okay, yep, my bad. So, we have, on Town Line Road, we have...
Wait, one minute. I don't see Town Line Road on here.
We're having trouble finding it. Some of these are not in sequence, I mean, they're...
So, there is no Town Line Road in this list, but I can write it down.
Would that be helpful? Is that best, Howard?
Is that?
They can't find Town Line Road in the list.
Well, maybe it's missing, then. Marcia had put all of this...
So, we'll write it.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay.
I've got it on there.
Let us know when you're ready.
Yep, 690.
Okay, 690 Town Line Road has two parcels?
It's missing.
Okay, one is across the road.
No, that was a...
This parcel is one that Howard was flying.
Yeah.
We have.
That's amended.
That's amended.
We'll remember about that.
766, right, because this is the boundary. 766 Town Line Road, 794 Town Line Road. What's that number? 5?
No, can't be, because it's missing.
144?
944.
944 Town Line Road.
That's it.
986 Town Line Road.
We relayed the map.
986 Town Line Road.
Didn't read anything.
1010 Town Line Road. Can you click on that?
Oh. I see now where I was scrolling.
This map has nothing to do with the watersheds. This is strictly your stuff.
Yeah, it's 1042. 1042?
This is the more accurate map.
Town Line Road. 1106 Town Line. 1128. 1196?
Oh, I've got 1170.
I'm sorry, 1170?
Make sure they're going, keep it up with it.
So, was it?
Was that 1170?
1170.
And 1196?
And 1196, I skipped 1170, Norman caught it. I turned away, and Bill was scrolling, and my eyes looked at the next. I think it's 1234, 1, 2, 3, 4.
So, 1234?
1234 Town Line, yep.
Can you see it on here?
1248?
Eight?
I believe that's an eight, but I haven't...
I see that, see that.
1256? 1310? 1324? 1326? 1478? 1552? 1624? 1680? 1726? 1750? And that's it?
That's it?
First, well...
But now, that's it for Town Line Road. We've got a few others that we've got to...
Cannon Drive is the next one.
Cannon Drive?
Yeah, that's off of Town Line Road.
There's three, I think.
Cannon?
Yep.
We start up here?
It starts here.
Oh, it goes that way?
So, basically, all of Cannon would be on it.
Right? Five.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and that's all that's on...
Cannon, yeah.
Well, that's where their driveways come out.
Cannon, yeah?
One, actually, excuse me, there are seven. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, where do I want to put them all here?
That's where the driveways come out, where the, like that.
Cannon Drive, last page.
Yeah.
Cannon Drive we're looking at now?
Yeah, Cannon Drive.
Did you see it? I don't see it there.
Last page.
Last page?
Yeah.
How many roads, how many houses do you, no, how many do they have on your list? On Cannon?
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
They're all, they're all there. So, check them all off. All seven addresses on Cannon.
Okay, so 85, 87.
Yep, if you want to read, yeah, you can read them off, but I, or if you want me to read them?
These were on Town Line Road.
So, it should be 85, 87, 107, 129, 171, and a missing one.
There are 203.
And 203. Oh, and 248.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, where are we going? Is this where you are?
Yeah, this is Mount Killington Avenue.
So, what do we have on Killington?
So, our town boundary goes straight right...
Right down here, right?
Yep. So, we have Killington, Sunset, which loops around, Victoria Drive, and then a whole bunch up here.
How would it be if we worked from...
Do we want to work west of...
Say, north of Killington?
Yeah, north of Killington for now, just so we can get that quadrant taken care of, and then...
Can we start with Killington, then, and go...
We decided to use Killington as a boundary, and we're going to continue west, or does that not make sense, Howard?
Oh, yeah, we start with Killington, and Marcia...
Above, we're working in the northern section, we haven't gotten down to Killington, so we're going to move west to the city, and then go down from Killington. Does that make sense?
Sure.
So, what do we have here? Bill, what are we working at?
This is complicated, so, this is Killington Avenue. These are the access roads into this development, but it still goes, it still goes back, and goes way back and loops around, so it's...
That's not affected.
Well, it is. Well, it is.
It's just slow.
Yeah, it's just a lot of data to do, so...
I'd start with Columbus, which is the furthest north, only because I live there.
Columbus Drive is right here.
Where's our boundary?
Oh, this is all the town.
This is all the town. This is Killington Avenue.
Yeah, this is...
Start here, and go this way, and through East Ridge Terrace, and then it'll go back down into...
But we're going to try and do it by road, so that they don't have to do...
Right.
Yeah, I'm saying, new Columbus, there's only two.
Yep.
And then go to East Ridge Terrace.
Okay.
And then, yep. You'll see what happens back there.
Yeah.
It gets screwy.
Right. Okay, so we're going to go to Columbus?
I can't find Columbus. Hi, Bob. You seeing, Howard?
If you can't find it, it's not there.
Welcome. You're early.
Columbus. Barbara's here, we're going to start all over.
Yeah, we'll give you a good orientation. It may take us about a half hour.
So, is this Columbus Drive?
Columbus out.
Drive.
I'm sorry.
That's a little short street that...
Yeah, did you get these two, two parcels?
Two, yeah, them done today.
Okay. Okay. Chairman, Mary Beth, did you find Columbus?
No, but we're going to write it down.
There are only two on three. We're sorry.
We'll do again.
Three?
I'm sorry. Did you start already?
No.
Okay.
There are three...
I didn't know whether there's an address over there.
On Columbus.
Okay.
The first one?
Drive.
The drive. First one is 17 Columbus Drive, 53 Columbus Drive, and 54 Columbus Drive. Yep. So, the next street that we'd like you to find is East Ridge Terrace, is that correct?
It's going to be all, probably all of East Ridge.
Yeah. I don't think anything is...
East Ridge?
East Ridge.
East Ridge Terrace.
All of them.
And it's everything on East Ridge Terrace. There are one...
Here it is.
Two.
7.
Three.
East Ridge is on page 7.
Yeah. And on 4. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
6.
7.
8.
9.
10.
12.
12.
13, 14.
I have 15 addresses.
So, what happens, Dana, in some cases, the driveway may, might come off from another corner, they might be off from another street. It's pretty hard to tell by just going up the street.
Okay, so, do you want us to read the numbers?
I would just take, I would think we'd just take all of East Ridge that's here, and just use everything that, all of East Ridge.
Okay. That works for you, that's...
There's one strange thing there that you're going to miss, if I, I think you're going to miss if I don't say something.
What's that?
Get back to them, where they're labeled, if you would. Where they're, okay. This is the only street, only one on Nancy Lane.
Yeah.
For some reason.
Because nobody has, nobody has a driveway off of it.
And like... Because this is Nancy Lane.
Yeah.
Okay. If you get onto Deborah, it looks like all of Deborah would be on there, too.
Do Nancy, so you don't forget it.
Yeah. Nancy Lane, which would be one address.
Nancy Lane.
Yes.
5? Yep.
Which one is it?
Page.
Page 8.
So, all of Deborah.
6. 7. 8. 9. 10. 12. 12. 13, 14. I have 15 addresses.
So, what happens, Dana, in some cases, the driveway may, might come off from another corner, they might be off from another street. It's pretty hard to tell by just going up the street.
Okay, so, do you want us to read the numbers?
I would just take, I would think we'd just take all of East Ridge that's here, and just use everything that, all of East Ridge.
Okay. If that works for you, that's...
There's one strange thing there that you're going to miss, if I, I think you're
I would just take, I would think we'd think we'd just take all of East Ridge that's here, and just use everything that, all of East Ridge.
Okay. That works for you, that's...
Yeah. There's one strange thing there that you're gonna miss if I, I think you're gonna miss if I don't say something.
What's that?
Get back to them where they're labeled, if you would. Where the, okay. This is the only street, only one on Nancy Lane.
Yeah.
For some reason.
Cause nobody has, nobody has a driveway off of it.
And like...
Okay.
Cause this is Nancy Lane?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you get onto Deborah, it looks like all of Deborah's would be on there too.
Do Nancy so you don't forget it.
Uh, Nancy Lane, which would be one address.
Nancy Lane.
Yes.
Yep.
Page?
Page eight.
So all of Deborah.
There's one other. And a Janus, yeah.
Just want to find out.
We start to go, we're done, East Ridge.
Yep.
Nancy Columbus.
And we're doing Deborah now.
Deborah now.
So two, two addresses on Nancy.
We have one address on Nancy. You have two?
We have two. We have twenty-four and four fifty, so I don't think they're close.
Four fifty?
Yeah.
Can't be a four fifty Nancy Lane.
Can you put a question mark for that? Do you know what that would be?
Which, which one is that?
Nancy Lane?
This is four, four fifty Nancy Lane.
They have two listed?
Can't be.
What page is that?
Page is Nancy Lane on.
Eight.
Eight.
They're both on eight?
Yeah.
Yep.
But it's weird, cause the mailing address is on Susan Lane.
Yeah, that four fifty is, looks like, uh...
What's the address on Susan?
That number.
Sixteen Susan Lane.
Sixteen, yep. Okay, so that's the one. I, I don't, this parcel must belong to Susan Lane. This parcel must be the same.
Uh, there's a well up here, I'm not sure which one it's in, but it may be that one.
But this parcel doesn't have an address on it, so...
Right, we had the same thing up in Connor Drive area. There's a parcel with no, with no...
May I make a, another suggestion here?
Well, yeah, if a well shows up when I'm flagging them in the grand list, I just won't flag that, a well property, which...
Because I think that that's what we have here, but I don't, no. Why that would be listed as four hundred and some?
Can't add, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense, can't be.
So you should just highlight that odd, um, Nancy Lane?
There's one street you're gonna miss if we don't pick it up now.
Four fifty west.
Top of Deborah. There's a Janus.
Right, right, right. You just mentioned, there were two. But we were gonna do Deborah next, right?
We just did.
Did we do Deborah?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
Yeah.
Did we again?
Right.
It should be all of Deborah. All of Deborah would be...
Well, it is, yep.
Uh, twelve.
Twelve, I think, okay. Eleven, twelve, yep.
Man, Bob, you have twelve addresses on Deborah?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Deborah, uh, Deborah Lane.
Thirteen addresses.
They're included. Do you, what do you have for Janus? Do you have Janus Avenue?
Yep, thirty-two and fifty-five.
So all Janus.
Sure. Let's, let's just read the numbers. For Deborah, we have twenty-one, uh, excuse me, eighteen?
Yep.
Twenty-one?
Yep.
Forty-eight?
Keep going.
Yes, forty-nine? Seventy-four?
There was, there was a seventy also.
There is no seventy on this map.
What page is that on, Deborah? Oh, twelve.
Do you have seventy-five?
Yes, yes. Well, seventy-four, seventy was the one that's missing, so it goes seventy, uh, five, one oh-one, one oh-two, one twenty-eight, one thirty-five, one fifty-six, and one sixty-one.
Yep.
So seventy is the one that's, the mystery one. Do you have that flagged, uh, Howard?
Seventy is...
Seventy is not on here. There's no parcel associated with that address. Is that correct?
Right, there's nothing here, yeah.
Seventy is, is the same person...
You know, seventy...
Is forty-eight.
You know, and seventy may be a well or something too. I see a sixty-one point one, could very well be, well, we have, when we have a well or something, uh, it's got a point one after it, and it could, it could be that, but I'll know when I...
Okay, but it's not a separate residence?
Right, not a separate residence, no, no.
We're not loading yet, we're not loading the, it's not loading the property lines, but, uh, might do Ruth next?
Uh, sure.
Cause we've done East Ridge, Janus.
Yep.
Well, you know what?
This is already been done, yeah.
Streets, I don't know, but...
Is there nothing more?
It, it's, it's working.
Okay, um, we next have Ruth Avenue?
I don't have it yet, do you? That's missing, is it?
Um, no, no.
We went through this in a hurry. Well, Ruth Avenue's on page nine.
Oh.
There it is?
Oh, yeah.
Seven, yeah. Got everything?
Yep. Okay, ready?
Yep.
We have seven, Ruth Ave. Ten. Eighteen. Fifty-three. Seventy. Eighty-seven. One oh-nine. One eighteen. One thirty. One thirty-seven.
What about one fifty?
Maybe, but it hasn't loaded yet.
No, but there's no address.
We don't have an address for anything above one thirty-seven.
Yeah, there is, there is a one fifty here that, uh...
Is it?
And that's...
It must be this parcel.
It is, yeah, it would be that, that would, that would be the right.
But it is a property that would have, that'd have to be notified, one fifty is.
Okay, so they have to mark it off on their sheet? But there's no residence there, is that correct?
No, it's just open land.
Yep, okay. Different property owner than one of the ones on, uh...
Yeah, someone in Maine.
And they're from out of state too.
Okay, so next we're going to David. Did you do Susan?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, David?
So it's on eight and nine.
Let the whole over?
He was on, starts on page eight, is it?
Alright, so it's gonna be all of David Road, we think.
Oh yeah, it is.
And we don't have a number, we can't count them all. Yep, so you have David?
Yep.
Just mark them all?
We think it's marking them all, we'll go over them in just a second, but yes.
Eighteen.
We think it's eighteen.
According to Bill.
Which one do you want to start, start with on?
This is impaired, what is it?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so the first, first one we have is twenty-six. David?
Look at twenty.
Road, yep?
Yeah.
Twenty?
That's four, we're off my phone, we'll find out, okay.
About twenty-six is...
We have sixty-two?
What about fifty?
Well, we do not have a fifty, it's not, there's no residence on fifty.
No, but that'd be, that'd be an odd number though.
Oh.
Even numbers would be on the right-hand side.
Well, we don't have a fifty either, then there's no space for a fifty.
The address for that is, there's a Susan...
Again, it's an open piece of land.
Uh, there is an address on Susan Lane, and that, we'll get to that in a minute, we're not doing Susan.
Well, I'm just saying that four fifty, which doesn't exist, there's a Susan Lane mailing address.
Okay, so that's the same property then. So Susan Lane and four fifty. We can check it off on Susan, because that will be our next.
We will not check it here.
Um, so twenty-six, sixty-two?
Yep.
Sixty-nine?
Yep.
Eighty-four? Ninety-six? One oh-one? One twenty-five? One thirty? One fifty-one? One fifty-six? One seventy-nine? One eighty? One ninety-four? Two oh-seven? Two thirty-one? Two fifty-three? And two seventy. Oops.
Thank you.
And two seventy-two.
And two seventy-two, yeah. It was way out of my field of vision.
And is there a three hundred way out there?
Maybe, but, uh, yes, it might be on you.
Way out to the right, two seventy-two is.
Two seventy-two is where it was here. We do not have a three anything.
The address is, the mailing address is two seventy-two.
Yep.
Oh, good catch.
Okay, so two seventy-two is combined with something else, so, okay.
These two are outliers, we can do those.
Alright, so we have two North End Drives? I think that's what that means.
Yep.
We, we moving?
North End Drive?
We moving from David Road?
Yes.
Yeah, we have finished David Road, we got... Are you gonna see anything on David Road?
No, no. Do, do you want us to write? Three hundred is, uh, has a different mailing address.
But it's still on David Road, somebody said, right?
No.
Well, you know what?
Well, yes.
That's a, I know what that is, it's, it's a change we just made recently on the maps, and it is a, it's open land.
That's the same property owner as another address on?
No, it, it got, it got split. There was, this one property owner owned about five lots, and those lots got split up, two went one way and three went the other way.
So what notation do you want our scribes to, to make about, about three hundred?
We need to notify that, that one that's, uh, you said three hundred, yeah.
Highlight and, and need to notify. That's, so that's a new landowner? Or new owner?
It will be, yep. It, it's, it's somebody new, so...
You're gonna process these, right?
When I see it, I'll know.
We'll just highlight it as, as another.
As a new, yeah, okay, and then Howard will take it from there.
Yep.
Okay, that makes sense.
North End?
North End Drive is where we're moving next. Do you have a page number?
Page six.
Page six?
Like just two?
Yes.
There are just two?
Just two, yep.
And those are, well, sorry. Uh, forty, uh, twenty-six and forty-eight. Correct?
Yep.
Okay, where we going now? Uh... Susan, right?
We can go, yeah, we can go Susan.
That was the one that was referenced.
Yep.
That's here.
Yep, that's the high, high...
You didn't do Susan Lane yet.
We're going to Susan now, that's right.
And Susan, and then West Ridge, and that's the whole development.
So Susan is the next, um, road that we'll do, Susan Lane. Do you have it? Okay, starting off with fifteen. Sixteen. Eighty-one. Eighty-four. One twelve. One thirty-one. That's not, oh, yeah, it is. Uh, one forty-two. Is that a fifteen?
One fifty-nine.
Oh, one fifty-nine. One, uh, one eighty-two.
Did you say one fifty-nine?
Yep. Two fifteen? Two fifty-six?
You have to one.
Yeah, two forty, two forty-three.
Oh. Two forty-three.
Okay.
I, I thought you were pointing to make sure I didn't miss.
Cause it's, it's where the, if the driveway here is first, it's just, yeah.
I got, I, there's a whole few thoughts going through my head as we're doing this activity, but, that's okay.
Alright, West Ridge would be the last in the development.
Alright. So we have West Ridge?
West Ridge Terrace.
Seven.
Page seven?
Goes into eight.
Yes. And it looks like we have one, two, three, four, five, six affected.
We missed one at the top, under Quick Tools.
But, but that's not affected. That's not affected.
For some reason, that, that's strange to understand, how those few in the middle there are not affected. That doesn't make sense to me.
It's only one. Yep, it's one.
No, there's actually... Aren't there two or four parcels there that?
Two.
It's only part of a parcel, so the rest of the parcel is affected, so...
It's part of the...
There's only one that has no affected.
Yep.
They won the lottery. We should buy that property.
That's a good question, why? We didn't...
I saw that on one of the maps. Okay, here we go, West Ridge, starting with number eleven. Fifteen. Twenty-one. Thirty-nine. Sixty-five. Ninety-seven. One seventy-five.
They skipped double.
Yes, we did. We are, the one that's not affected is one nineteen.
Is not affected.
One nineteen is not affected, so you can make a notation that... That island, yep.
How about one fifty?
There is no one fif, uh, one fifty is probably this unmarked parcel.
That'd be the right.
That may be, see, twenty fifty oh six, let me see.
Uh, where's one fifty? It's not here.
There's no parcel marked for one fifty. There's no...
There should be, there should be a parcel. Definitely for, one fifty is a parcel, and there's an owner.
Is it linked to Susan Lane, to two fifteen Susan Lane? Yep.
No.
It's linked to two fifteen Susan Lane, okay, so that's it. So they'll be notified through two fifteen Susan Lane.
Okay, okay, owners from both sides.
Yep.
So we should mark one fifty?
Well, it's already taken care of, because the notification will go to the owner.
Okay.
I mean, you can mark it, but it's one owner, right? It's still one residence?
It is, it is one owner, but maybe in sending the notice, they need a notice for each...
Each side?
It's, yeah, I would guess.
If it's not, if it's in the, there's no mailbox there, it's gonna come back.
It's okay, it'll come back. But it's a Susan Lane.
I would put, I would put the same notification in, in Susan Lane. So I'd make a notation to put two notices, one for one fifty in the Susan Lane.
If, if you're looking at this, using this, the mailing address is Susan Lane. I mean, if you're using this to identify the parcel, and then look at the mailing address, you're gonna get Susan Lane.
So what we should do is, we should make sure that there's a notification for each parcel affected, and if there's only one owner or one mailing address, then they get two. One for the, uh, residents where they get their mail, and the other one for the parcel that would have an address.
Let's see, contiguous parcels are combined together for billing purposes. So I guess if, if they're contiguous like these are, maybe all they need is one, one notice for all their property. In the grand list, it would show the total acreage of all their property that they own, all the contiguous property.
So it would list both addresses? The one that's listed as Susan and the one that's listed as, as one fifty?
It would have, it would have the total acreage in there, and, yes, it would, it should be covered.
But it should, there should be a notation that, that Susan Lane gets notified for two addresses.
Yep, yep.
Because otherwise, if that, if they split that property, and they come before us, and so we're the stormwater commission, and we're the, uh, planning commission, and we're other regulatory agencies, we're gonna have to know that, so, they might as well know that upfront that they are responsible.
So by just, by just indicating, just marking it off as one we found, it's gonna automatically point to Susan Lane?
It should, and they should get two, I'm just saying that there should be two notifications, one for each property. Alright, where are we?
One seventy-five is the last one.
One seventy-five. One ninety-six? One, excuse me, one ninety-five? One ninety-six? Two oh-one? Two thirty-six?
It's two forty-nine, yeah.
Two forty-nine? Two seventy-six? Two seventy-seven? Three oh-one?
Uh, three hundred.
Three hundred is probably this one that's not marked. Is there another, um...
Three hundred is, uh...
A post office box in Edgar Town, Mass.
Mark, mark that one.
Mark that one, yep, three hundred.
That's, yeah, that's, that's a vacant lot. I know what it is, it's what it is.
Okay.
Do you mean one seventy-five?
But we're gonna notify them anyway.
They'll be notified.
Yeah, one seventy-five, okay, I missed that one.
Yeah.
We ready to continue?
Yep.
Yep.
Three twenty-three? Three thirty-two? Three thirty-five? Three sixty-six? Three seventy-three? Four oh-one? Four oh-two?
No.
Oops, that's a, that's interesting.
Where, where's that? Where's four oh-two?
It's right here. It's got an address, it's almost on.
That's contiguous with a parcel across the street, um...
David?
Arnold owns... Arnold owns two parcels.
Let's, four, four-ten, uh, we don't have a four-ten.
Four-ten and four-fifty are owned by the same person.
By the same person. We're talking about four oh-two that's missing from you.
Well, the mailing address for both of those is four oh-two.
We have no four-ten.
For four-ten and four-fifty.
But four oh-two is not listed.
It, it's not listed for a nine-eleven location, but it is, there is a mailing address for parcel four-ten and four-fifty.
At four oh-two.
At four oh-two.
So they'll get a notice.
Well, I can believe that this is four-ten and four-fifty up here.
Well, this is gotta be an odd number.
Oh, okay, maybe it's still...
They're vacant. This is on one side, and the other side is, is...
So are these on here?
Well, his house is there, and he owns the piece on the other corner that goes, he owns that, right there.
But Bill says that these are odd numbered, and they should, neither four-ten nor four-fifty.
It was an address, yeah.
Well, you have a quandary, because there's, there's, there should be a notification for four oh-two, which...
Both, both four-ten and four-fifty would be, would go to four oh-two.
Okay, so mark, so then just mark all three of those and...
But they don't have four oh-two on their sheet. They need to get three notifications, right?
Yeah, they should, yeah.
There's three notifications then, for, for... There's three notifications then, for.
So we'll add 402.
Add 402, yep.
402, 450 and.
And 410.
410 and 450 are not on there.
Now, for those of you watching from home, we're just taking a small break so that we rest our voices, and we'll be back with you momentarily. We gotta provide some entertainment. This is really like watching page.
We should go back because we skipped this.
Whoops. Where are we now?
We're in, we're in the southeast quadrant bounded between, um, uh.
We have been north of Kellington Avenue.
North of Kellington Avenue and, and west of Town Line Road.
A lot more to go.
Now we're going south?
No, we, we should circle back because we missed this whole Leeson Road section.
Yeah. Maybe we'll come back to this.
Who gets 119?
I can let our, um, audience know that we are gonna take a small break and we'll come back to this exciting activity in just.
That's terrible.
We're gonna suspend things here.
Oh, 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 okay. We crossed it out because it was, remember in the middle of the map?
So for those of you watching, in addition to resting my voice, we are going to go to another portion of the agenda.
So I crossed it off because it's not.
On our new business section.
I see, I basically crossed it, I didn't know why though.
And we'll be, um, listening to information on a subdivision proposal. So, um, that is scheduled for 7:30, so we'll be back to this fascinating work on identifying parcels that are in the affected area of Spoonbrook, it must have been, in just a few minutes. Thank you very much.
Yeah. But now I do.
Sorry.
You had a good time out there.
Should we take him five minutes?
Well, that's what I said earlier. Can't lean out like into the table.
Welcome.
Good evening.
We'll be with you just in, in just a moment as people come back from break.
They wouldn't let me in, so I decided to block.
How are you? I'm the woman with the two German shepherds, as you so graciously allow.
Me too.
Use your trail system.
How are you? How are you? Two of them.
Two new ones.
Two new ones now?
Yes.
Really?
Lost the two you know.
Wow. Did you see the ponds?
Yeah. Yeah. Ponds, plural?
No, I mean the pond.
Just the one, yeah. Yeah, I saw that this, this winter. I saw it. Almost happened.
Oh, you did, huh?
Yeah. And I tried to get ahold of somebody, um, your caretaker, I didn't, I didn't know who to call. So I ended up with the Realtor woman, Bunny. Is it Bunny?
Freddie?
Freddie.
Oh, that was me.
Oh, that's you? Hi, Freddie.
Yeah, I remember you calling, I think. Did you know about the pond?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I just, I mean, I practically saw it happen.
Really?
Yeah, it took, it took a few days. Boy, that damn.
I didn't know how it happened. I mean, nobody knows what happened.
There was a beaver, um, they, they put a small little hut, whatever you wanna call it, right where it broke there. I could see where.
The beavers did?
Yes, I could see if in the winter they were coming, breaking the ice right there. It was quite small. And I don't know if they just, I don't know what they did.
Usually they fix it, they're breaking.
No.
What, you don't need one?
There isn't one.
Okay, you'll share. Just tell me when you're ready, we'll.
On page 10. Tell me what you did for Connor Drive, 10 and 11.
All right.
Starts on 10 and goes over to 11.
Pass these out?
Just did 10, okay.
Uh, this is Peter Kunsler. He owns, um, this property, um, actually, quite a bit. I've been studying seven acres and two boughs and a bunch of barns. And in 2013, he did a 12 acres subdivision of the property. And I kind of outlined the, um, the 12 acres here in, in yellow. It approved.
That's been approved?
This here, this is, I got this out of the, um, Wettentown. This is Wettentown documents.
That was what was done previously? I said that was what was done previously.
Yes, in 2013. So now he's decided, um, that he'd like to amend this 12 acres to four and a half, which is the line here, right, kinda goes right across, kinda made a line, you see that?
And it's the lower portion.
It's the lower portion. And put the remaining seven and a half back with the farm.
Back into what?
Back into the land, into the farm, into the 177. He wants to add it back in. So this farm, all of this was 177 acres.
Mm-hmm.
So he wants to amend this by making it only four and a half acres he wants to sell, and then this will go back into the land.
Has he run this by the state?
Well, that is what we're asking, do we need an amendment, lot line adjustment? And then we're gonna send it up to the state. He has all of his, um, all of his documentation that he needed for the state, for this 12 acres. He has his replacement deals.
The second page, what is, what is.
Well, the second page, I just wanted to point out is that this actually works much better for him because if you look at the second page and you see the lines in yellow and then the lines, he is in the land use program that the state offers. And this acreage that's not in it, and the four and a half is not in it, but if he was going to sell and sell off the 12, it was in it. So he thinks it's a better fit. See what I mean? There's 15 acres that is not in the current use program.
So the four and a half is not in land use?
It's not. So it's kind of a better fit.
Well, it's a better deal too, because he doesn't have to pay the tax to take it out.
Right, and he didn't realize that when he did that.
Yep.
So just so I understand, the 12.2 acres would go back, uh.
Not the, not the 12.2, it, it would be the four and a half and then the remaining that was the 12, so I think it's like seven.
Seven point seven?
Yeah.
Would go back to the.
The farm.
So, so that 12.2 acres includes everything that's in yellow here?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed.
Yes, no, that's, that's okay. Yep. And then I made a line, he is gonna need to get a, a survey or two, to do that line.
So how do these two?
So, right here is what this is here. It's just the four and a half.
This, whole part?
Yeah. Well, not all of it, it goes, it goes actually with this, it's about there.
That's this?
Yep.
And where's Tamarack Lane?
This, this is the same.
Which right up next to her land.
There. Putting back in.
Well, you know what? It does because, look, here's that, see that little thing here? It's right there.
Oh, yeah.
See, I know, I had a hard time with that one too.
So this is being fully onboard with this?
Well, see, right here, see there's, there's some equipment barns? That's the equipment barn, so it's really right there. I don't think the little shed is showing here.
Just get rid of four and a half of them. Seven points, this is 7.7. This is, this is.
It's right about here, it's right about there. So, see, so when he did, when he did this, okay, he added an F, yeah.
Yep, I see, I have to turn it from this way.
I know, I did too.
You heard Norm's, Norm's question, this, this is clear of the estate usage.
Acres where the residence sits? It is, yeah, oh, I'm sorry. And so you have a buyer. Yes. So the, the four and a half acres has the main home, the tennis court, and the pool, and a garage, and two small houses. And that is for sale and we have a buyer for it. And they know that this needs to be adjusted. To four and a half acres. Now, the four and a half acres came from the engineer who said, he put it on his calculator and he said it's about.
The surveyor.
The surveyor, it's about four and a half or 4.6. So we're, we're, we think it's around that.
That's why I was.
So, right now you have basically two parcels there. You've got the 12, the 12 acre parcel and then the rest of it. And so what you're trying to do is a boundary line adjustment, and when you get all done, you're still gonna end up with just two parcels.
Right.
So you, we're not creating any new parcel.
No, we're not looking to subdivide that 12 acres in half, to have two parcels. We're looking just to have the four and a half is one parcel, and then the 160, whatever's left, is the other parcel.
So that's the 100 and.
But you're still dividing, has the 12 and a half acres been already carved out?
Yes.
And conveyed separately?
Yes.
So now you wanna divide in effect, divide that, convey, merge it back in, seven plus acres, back in with the farm, and sell this, is this house already constructed?
It's already there, yeah. It's the original homestead.
Beautiful place.
Yep.
This is on Tamarack?
Mm-hmm. The very end.
Across the street from you.
Yes, right next to me.
So when the surveyor makes a new map, what it would look like is, it was, it would show the four and a half acre parcel, and then it would show the, all the rest of the land as being one, one parcel. So this line would go away right here.
Right.
This, this line would disappear.
Yes. So the way I look at it is you just take that one boundary line and you just shrink it down to the four and a half. So you just have the four and a half and then the rest is all the farm.
And Bill, for a boundary line adjustment, we just require a survey plat, right? It's already been surveyed. Will this plat, will this do for, for our purposes, Bill?
She's waiting, she still needs surveys.
No, we, we need, we need to survey it.
It needs to be surveyed. Needs to be a whole new map.
And we also need to get a state amendment from, we need to get an amendment from the state as well, and we know that.
To put that money, to put the land back in current use. Because that was taken out.
No, it was never taken out.
It was never taken out.
So the state amendment is what again?
We will have to get an amendment from the state, a lot line amendment. We'll have to amend this.
You have to amend the state subdivision permit.
Yeah, right.
You're talking about the current use for current use?
For current use purposes?
No, just for, to, to sell that four and a half acres. We, we think we're gonna have, we think we're gonna have to get one.
I don't think so.
Do you mean for Act 250?
No, we don't have an Act 250, no.
Or is it for the water and wastewater permit?
It would be the wastewater.
Okay.
Okay.
So he's asking to get a new survey map, which would show what, what you wanna do here.
Just for the four and a half acres, right? Does it deserve a?
Well, it's. We need to see, uh, we're going to approve a boundary line adjustment from, from the current parcel, which is the 12.2, so we'll need to see all of that and how you're, how you're gonna be dividing it, changing it.
He would just do a survey of the typical map that you have here. He's not gonna do the whole, the whole property. He would just, another survey map, just the same, similar to what you've already got, only he would show the four and a half acre parcel and he would remove the, the line.
Remove that line.
Right, okay.
And then he would just change the numbers showing the total number of acreages for each piece and so forth.
Yeah.
Basically, it's gotta be a same map that, almost identical to what you've already done, probably.
Stepped right across, it actually works really well. I can't believe when I picked this up the other day, I said it works perfect because it's exactly where it's divided on the current use. It's perfect.
A lock, yeah.
Yeah.
You're gonna need to meet some bounds on this survey, just not correct.
Right.
We'll have a real survey.
And there's a form, a boundary line adjustment form that Bill has.
Oh, there is? Oh, okay. How long does that take about?
Well, um, as soon as you have the survey, let us know.
Okay.
And, you know, we'll have you back in and we can finalize it that, that night.
Yeah. Once the survey is in, then, and you fill out the forms, it's all taken care of.
We meet every three weeks.
Oh, you meet every three weeks?
We grant, we grant the boundary line adjustment, will it be conditioned upon them getting a state permit, subdivision permit?
Well, it's not a subdivision, it's the wastewater.
Yeah, it's an amendment to the permit.
Amendment to the subdivision permit, yeah.
So something would, in the deed would be described to cover all that in the new deeds? Sure.
We have all the engineering for the replacement fields, we have everything. It's all been done, so it really shouldn't be that difficult to do the amendment. It's just that they're backed up, I hear. And our closing date is November 15th, so we're gonna try to get it done right away.
We have two meetings in October, so.
What?
We have two meetings in October.
Oh, you do, okay.
I guess this looks acceptable, right, to call it a boundary line, because he's, he's not creating a new law.
Okay.
He's gonna move some boundaries, but we're gonna still end up with the same. And the surveyor knows what he's gotta do.
And, and the wastewater's not going to be changed?
No, nothing.
None of the utilities or any.
I think the state will just require an amendment to it, I'm just saying that it's four and a half and.
As opposed to 12 and 1.2 or whatever.
Yeah, that's really all they're gonna want, I think.
I think they could just crank that out.
They can't, apparently.
But it's that, but the state's action should not be, our action should not be contingent about what the state does. We can, we can say that this is okay, and they actually have more information to take to the state.
It's not part of our process.
No, it's not part of our process. So we can say that this is, once they fulfill the requirements as outlined in the, um, the form, right, form for the boundary line adjustment, you're good with us, so.
I still think ours needs to be conditioned on them getting state approval. Otherwise, we've got a boundary line adjustment, and if for some reason they run into trouble at the state level, which I can't imagine why they would, but we're gonna have conflicting permits.
Well, we won't be able to get title insurance if we don't have it. We won't be able to get title insurance if we don't have that, so we will be getting that.
All I'm saying, no, I understand you're gonna get it, I'm not questioning. I'm really concerned about what we do.
You're saying we, we do the boundary line contingent that, that you're gonna get that done? If you don't get that done, then, then we don't do the boundary survey, but it's kind of what we're at.
Or we can wait till you have everything settled and you can come back, and it's, it's totally up to you folks.
Okay. Well, I'm just thinking that the state will take almost right up till November, you know, to give us what we need. That's what I'm hearing, I'm not sure, but, um, that would make it pretty hairy at the end, but we'll do what we have to do.
So, so Bill, this is a question for you perhaps in terms of procedure. If we, if we, if, when they come back with the appropriate survey plat and we approve that with the condition that they get their wastewater permit from the state, then they can just come in, file the wastewater permit with the, uh, with our form and our approval, and then that's all taken care of?
I think if, in order for Barbara to, I mean, Barbara wouldn't be able to sign the plat until it's, everything's in though, right?
Yeah.
So...
Contingent on it.
Right. I, I don't, I mean, if we'd have, if we make it contingent, then when they bring in the paperwork that it's got it, then it would just go on to your next agenda to be approved.
But if we've already approved it with a contingency, then Barbara can come in and sign it at any time? Doesn't have to wait for me, you know?
That's, that's, I think that's up to you. You know, the rules don't, the, the rules for the boundary line adjustment don't, don't have any provisions for that, so I don't...
But if we've approved it?
Right.
Then if it just requires a signature to be official?
Right.
Then Barbara could come in on a Tuesday afternoon?
Right, so once, once they bring that in, I can let Barbara know, then she can come in and sign it, then they can file it, yeah.
Yeah, but then they would bring in their permit and everything would be all together and you would have all the documentation to file.
Yep. What we could do, if I'm hearing you correctly, is that we could offer our authority to sign the boundary line adjustment once they have the state permit in hand.
Yeah, we've done that before.
Yeah, I'm sorry?
We've done that before.
But now they need to get the paperwork from you, Bill, so they can start the process going.
Okay.
Yeah, the survey and the paperwork are important for our process.
Right.
Understood.
Do you have Freddie's email?
I can give it to him.
Okay. Digital form.
Good here. You good?
Now, is there?
Well, thank you, everybody.
Fee for these two, for this two, right? Is there?
What is it?
It's in the farms.
Do I, are you gonna email me that form or?
It's on our, it's on our website.
Oh, it is? I can just download it?
Yep.
Boundary line adjustment form?
Uh, boundary line adjustment form, yes.
That's what I'll do.
But his name is Bill Sweet, you can't find it on the website.
I'm there.
Okay.
He's at the town office.
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome. Would you like to keep the paperwork or you can throw it out? We'll keep this though.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Nice evening, beautiful space. I hadn't been in here before.
And it's not our usual space.
I'm glad the fire alarm didn't go off.
Bye-bye, nice to see you.
Where's he gonna live? Where's he gonna live?
His wife, I guess, doesn't like it. He's basically from out of state.
Yeah.
You know, and so he's, she doesn't, she doesn't wanna be here.
But he wants to keep all the land.
Yeah.
He's, yeah, it's gone.
I'm not sure what he's gonna do.
Well, after that intervention, we are now back to continue our work on identifying the affected areas by the Moon Brook and Mustang Brook watersheds. Thank you for your patience. Better come up with a plan. Okay, where were we? Bill, help us out here. Help me out here.
Okay, so we need to do, this is the Gleason Road, Gleason Road, East Mountain Road, Elburn, West Elburn.
This is all from off of Killington, right?
Oh, yes, yeah.
We missed coming down.
We did Karen.
Yes, we did.
Previously, so.
Send a notice to everybody.
We have to focus on Gleason South?
Yeah.
Just pay for it.
Maybe if...
Howard?
What, what, what road?
That's Heritage Hill. So I guess they gotta get a notice.
Boy, you know, that's, that's, we're talking...
Repeat?
Forty-some odd units out in Heritage Hill, that's, that's...
That land is not developable, but...
But this is, this is probably the dumping thing, you know, putting stuff in storm drains, so...
Well, there's no drains around, I don't know.
That's right, 'cause there's a pond right there, too.
Uh, the pond's over here, yeah.
Yeah. Isn't it hard to understand how, having a pond right there that's not included in this watershed area?
It, yeah, it's, it's where the stuff drains. So for some reason, the pond drains into some other watershed.
So there's no...
Into Tenny Brook? I don't know.
I don't know, I think we'd have to send a notice to each of the units because they're individual ones, but I'm not sure who we'd send it to.
Are they condo units?
Yeah, that's the gables and the meadows and...
Well, that's different, that's not condo units, like...
These are, though.
Who's, who's the owner of the, the whole property?
I don't know.
Actually, all of the tenants that live there own a portion of it. They all own a piece of the land.
There's a condo and it's common area, right? Like every other condo.
So is there an agency? Is there a mailing address for the condo association?
Yeah.
It's gotta be.
You should send one notice.
We'll, we'll, we'll figure that one out.
Yeah, we'll get around that.
That's gonna be a little more complicated, so we'll figure that one out.
So we need to make a note, those, before anybody forgets, because our scribes are our most important people here.
Yes, yes, they are.
So for our scribes, if we make a note that Heritage Hill Condominium Association needs to receive a notice. Because if the scribes don't get it, it doesn't exist.
Don't forget the guy's name, Mark.
I think Bo's Place is probably the best place to start.
I'll call him up.
Yeah, we'll go there.
So we have, how many? Three?
Three.
Three on Bo's Place?
Bo's?
Three that are...
Bo's with a B?
Oh, B.O.S. There are three affected areas, okay, there are more, but the other one, so it's out of the... Okay.
Just a sec, we haven't found them yet.
That's quite all right, I'm, I'm waiting. I'm a patient, entertaining person.
You think there's just three parcels?
There's three parcels, yep.
Hidden in here somewhere?
Hidden somewhere, yep.
This may not be on this list. You know, we were working from the map that Steve had made and perhaps it missed that, I don't know.
So B.O.S.E. Place?
B.O.S., just B.O.S. Place.
B.O.S. Place.
Yeah, I don't think we have them.
And there are three parcels. And whenever you're ready, I'll call up the number.
Oh, I don't think we have it.
Take a reading.
We have eighty-three.
We're just adding them. We're adding them on the back.
Eighty-six. Eighty-three. Eighty-six. And eighty-eight.
Okay.
Okay?
Gleason Road?
Yeah. Anybody might be, is this not affected?
That's not, this is.
Right, so we'll, we'll all be affected, yep.
Gleason Road?
Yeah, we're on Gleason Road. And we're going to go from Wallace to highest, we're going...
Standing back?
Yeah.
Ready?
Yep. Ready?
Nine and ten, just, oh, hang on.
There are quite a few. And we're gonna, we will be starting with number three ninety-four.
Hmm?
Really?
Well, at least that's the way it looks on this map.
Yep.
We've got about twelve before that.
They are not affected.
Okay.
Out of the watershed.
After three ninety, uh, four ninety, what was that you said? Three ninety-four, we go to... It's off the map. Four seventy-four? Okay. Four ninety-eight? Five oh-seven?
Yep.
Five twenty-two? Five thirty-three?
Yep.
Five fifty-two? Five fifty-five?
Yep.
Five seventy-five? Five eighty-six? Five ninety-one? Six oh-nine?
Let's skip six oh-three.
Yes, we do not have a six oh-three, but we do have a box that could be six oh-three.
There should, there's...
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, Bill. Pull me up, way up.
It is in there?
Six oh-three, yep. Bill just found it for me. It was off my radar screen. Did I say six oh-nine?
Yep.
Okay, I'm now going to six thirty-eight?
There was a six thirty-five on here.
There's a six thirty-four.
You know, there was a number, let me tell you, there was a, a nine-one-one number change to do with this property right here, and that's why you're seeing a mix-up, and it's to do with this Cavalieria on six thirty-five. I remember doing that. I think we've got some mixed up numbers on that screen you're looking at.
Okay, well, we don't have a six thirty-five on our screen, we have a six thirty-four. Do you have a six thirty-four?
We have a thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Is that, is that the mix-up?
And the address, there's an address as well as the location.
Yeah, right, they're both six thirty-five.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be part of that, so.
So we can, they don't need six thirty-four.
Right.
Okay, so Howard, do you wanna make some kind of a note?
Yeah, because I, I know what that is, it was a nine-one-one change.
So after that, six thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Yep.
So we, we just, six thirty-five, we don't indicate anything for it?
It's gotta get a notice, it needs a notice.
It is six thirty-five and not six thirty-four.
And not six thirty-four.
Put a question mark by it, is...
Howard's gonna make it, Howard's gonna make it.
Question mark by it.
You don't have anything else to do, right?
I remember this, I remember that we had to change a nine-one-one number because they were, it was out of step going up the street. It was out of place and we, we did something with this number.
Okay. So we got six thirty-eight, next one is six sixty-five?
Yeah.
Six sixty-eight?
Yep.
Seven oh-two?
Yep.
Do you have a six seventy-eight?
Maybe?
Nope.
It's, I know that address. It, the house is, you go down a long driveway.
Does it see this?
The middle of that.
Same thing that you did to me on here, seven oh-two. So yes, we have a six seventy-eight.
Okay.
We have a seven oh-two?
Yeah.
Nope, we have a seven... Yeah, seven oh-two, seven, uh, ten?
Mm-hmm.
Seven fifty-eight? Seven sixty-five? Holy smokes. Seven ninety-eight?
Yes.
Eight hundred? I don't think there are any more.
The eight ninety, which goes down back there someplace, is one more number.
Oh, there's, there's an empty one back there.
There's an empty one, but it has no...
But that definitely would be, that would definitely qualify. That's, that's one of the river runs through it parties.
So eight ninety has a mailing address for seven-ten Gleason Road?
Yes, that makes sense.
That's fine, yep.
Because seven-ten is right here.
Okay.
But they'll both get notices?
Yeah, two notices, yeah, to the same address, yeah.
Have we done Killington yet?
No, no. We went north of Killington, we didn't do Killington or anything else. We've done everything up in this quadrant now, Bill, north of Killington.
Yes, so...
If you will find Killington Ave, I think that's where we're gonna start.
Yeah, it starts on three.
Well, we haven't done, we didn't do East Mountain View or Elburn Avenue off of Gleason Road. Oh, are you back on Killington again?
Nope, nope, I'm not. Nope.
Sure looked like it.
Nope.
Nope, no, no, no. Scrap what I just said. For those of you watching at home, you can ignore the last...
Uh, thank you, Howard, sorry.
That's Elburn.
Elburn.
Elburn with an A or an E?
And West Elburn.
How do you spell it?
E.L., B.E.R.N.
That's on page ten.
Oh, thanks.
East Mountain Road, Elburn and West Elburn.
Actually, we're gonna go from east to west. So we're gonna start with East Mountain?
East Mountain View?
East Mountain Drive.
East Mountain, East Mountain View Drive.
Okay.
Everybody with us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna start on East Mountain View Drive and, what is this? That's one oh-four, okay, so it's... Yeah, I think our first one is forty-nine?
Mm-hmm.
Seventy-two?
Got it.
Eighty-nine? You think it's one oh-four?
How about one hundred?
One hundred is a water, again, that's a well, that's a water thing.
Oh, Gleason Road Water Company.
Need to notify them?
Yeah, we do.
Well, we'll send a notice, yeah, we should send them a notice as well, that's what it is.
All right.
It doesn't show up there, yes, we need to send it.
Okay. At one forty-eight?
Oh, did you do one forty-eight?
Wait, wait, one forty-seven.
Okay.
Sorry, it was tucked over there outside my, I feel the vision.
And one forty-eight.
And one forty-eight, yep.
Okay.
Going over here, we're doing Elburn next, I believe?
Yeah.
Everybody with us?
Yep.
Yeah, same.
Uh, we start with forty-two, oops, twelve, Elburn. Forty-two? Fifty-seven? Forty? Oh, no, that's West Elburn. No, no, no. Fifty-seven, different street.
Nothing, forty-two goes...
Forty-two, the fifty-seven.
Yep.
Uh, seventy-seven? One seventeen? One fifty-one?
Yep.
One sixty-four? One ninety-six?
Any one...
Skip one.
Yeah.
One eighty-nine?
Not on here, well, unless, should be.
Oh, there it is.
Should be. All right, one eighty-nine, yep, okay. Bill was hiding it on me.
Zoom.
So one eighty-nine, one ninety-six, and two thirty.
Good.
All right, now we're gonna go to West Elburn. On West Elburn, we have... Thirteen?
Yes.
Forty?
Yes.
Forty-one?
Yeah.
Do we need to West Ridge?
We're going to the west side.
Yeah, we did West Ridge.
Yeah.
Because that was the one that had the one.
Do we do West Ridge Church?
Yes.
Okay, so, I don't know, place is ours.
So we're gonna start with, well, we're gonna be Killington Ave first, because that way we know that we've got the upper voting. We're gonna go to Killington Ave.
Okay, page three.
And our first number is two seventy-five. Hang on. We're looking at the town boundary line. Is this one in it? No, no.
It's on page three.
Yes, we believe that our...
This is, this is the, this is the boundary right here.
So we believe that our first one on Killington should be two seventy-five?
We don't have that one.
We don't have that address.
You know what?
We have two seventy.
Killington Avenue was renumbered a few years ago, maybe they don't have the new numbers going up Killington.
Who doesn't have the new numbers?
That map, I mean, there's a, it should be like two sixty-two, two seventy, two eighty, two ninety, three oh-nine, three fourteen.
Hang on, hang on, we have, um, we have three fourteen, we have three oh nine, we have two ninety. But before that, we have two seventy-five, but-
Two seventy-five?
Two seventy-five, we don't have two seventy or two whatever you said.
Two seventy-five either.
So, we, should we just go by the, we should just grab the parcel maps and, and not take these addresses, make sure we get all the ones? It's all of the addresses in the town.
It's all, everything up Killington Avenue.
All of our, it's all of ours, yes. So we, we can just make sure we get all the ones that have the Killington Avenue address, so-
Well, what type of notifications do they need to make on there?
Anything with a, a, uh, a mailing or a physical for Killington Avenue gets a notice. And we'll cover it.
Yep.
So we would know that all the mailings, because we're in growth, we're-
Right, so if it, if it-
We're doing the physical.
If it's Killington Ave, it comes out to either column, they're gonna get an add, they're gonna get a mail, a, a notice.
Okay. All right, so now we're gonna start on the western side of the town?
Western side.
South of Killington Ave.
Yes.
First one is Carmel Place.
How do you spell it?
Carmel Place.
C-A-R. Oreo.
Last page, now, does that have all the tenants on it?
Sorry?
Carmel Place, does it have?
Carmel Place, we have three. Oops, sorry, four, that one.
There's a lot more than that.
Eight, ten, twelve, fourteen.
That's all it's on here.
Again, that map is not-
Oh, wait, here they come, ah, they're coming, they're, they're, they're coming on-
Now we go, yep, we got quite a few, please.
Still loading.
Still loading. Well, we're gonna start at the top.
Okay, yep.
I think this is the top, right?
Yes.
That's the first one. So our first one seems to be eighty-three.
Yes.
And then we have one twenty-five.
Yes.
But, but, but the numbers go down and around, it's weird, it's a, it's a-
But they, they don't start low, they extend it?
No, it goes down to here.
Okay.
Why are, just a minute?
Oh, really?
Why are the numbers all the same for the tax map and everything in Carmel Place?
It's all common land. Each one owns a portion of it.
Percentage of it.
It's all common land.
Okay.
That's what the percentage sign, I guess, is.
Because it numbered, go around this way, that's why they go around the block.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, I didn't know what you were telling me.
Right.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I know they're going down that way.
It's a loop, but they don't-
And since that map, you probably added five numbers.
Right.
It was open last year.
My mind didn't process it.
It's okay.
Well, I know, you know, I know where they are, so.
Okay, so you have two, correct? You have eighty-three and one twenty-five?
Yes.
Now we're gonna go to four forty-six.
Okay, you skipped a few, skipped one, I guess.
What did we skip?
Two seventy-one.
Two seventy-one is a new, a new building, which is a-
Not on this map, though.
It's a new unit.
Should we, would we like to get?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Carmel Place, everything in Carmel Place is, is in it.
Okay. So after four forty-six, four sixty-six?
Mm-hmm.
Four sixty-nine?
Yeah.
Four seventy, uh, eight?
Yep.
Four ninety-three? Five forty? Six oh three?
Yep.
Six thirty-seven? Six fifty-three?
Yep.
Seven oh five? And seven twenty-three.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go over to Hitzel Terrace. All of Hitzel Terrace is also in the affected-
The four?
Hitzel, Lilac, Burnham.
Yep. Okay, so, it's everybody on Hitzel Terrace, we'll give you the numbers in just a second.
It looks at.
Okay, ready?
Yeah.
Twelve?
Yes.
Forty-four?
Yes.
Forty-seven?
Mm-hmm.
Sixty-nine?
Mm-hmm.
Eighty-four?
Yeah.
Ninety-seven? One oh eight?
Mm-hmm.
One thirty-four?
Yep.
One fifty-three?
Yep.
One eighty?
Yes.
Two ten?
Mm-hmm.
Two twenty-one?
Uh, we don't have that one.
Four.
Four.
Two twenty-four, okay.
All right, uh, two forty-eight?
So that was two twenty-four?
Two twenty-four, my- All right.
And good on two forty-eight.
And two forty-eight, right?
Yep.
Two eighty-four?
Uh, we have a two seventy-nine.
Well, and that's the fire district.
That's our well lot.
Well lot, so-
Probably this one.
Okay, it doesn't show on yours, but-
Nope.
But we'll send something to it?
Yeah, they'll get notified.
Three oh six?
Yep.
Three thirty?
Yes.
Three thirty-nine?
Mm-hmm.
Three fifty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
Three seventy-eight?
Mm-hmm.
Four thirty-six? Oops, excuse me, four twenty-one?
How about four hundred?
Four hundred is owned by the town of Rutland, it's a little piece of land at the end of the street. It's a, um-
I, I assume there's no need-
Stormwater.
No need to notify them, right?
It's got, well, it's got an address of the town office is where, where it goes to.
I'll, I'll, I'll take care of notifying myself, don't worry.
Okay.
So is that a piece of land that was, um, the town kept because of stormwater issues?
Yeah, there's retention pond was built there.
Yeah, there was some-
I, I remember back when I was a little-
Yep, yep.
Slickboard, we acquired a piece of land up there just for that purpose.
Next thing that could very well be.
I think it does.
Yes.
I, I know you're right, and that's what it was.
Yeah.
So four twenty-one was the last one.
They got four twenty-one.
Four twenty-one? Four thirty-six?
Yes.
Four forty-seven?
Mm-hmm.
Four eighty?
Yeah.
Four ninety-seven?
Got it.
Five ten?
Mm-hmm.
Five seventeen?
Mm-hmm.
Five thirty-seven?
Mm-hmm.
Five forty?
Mm-hmm.
Five six, oop, five sixty-nine?
Yeah.
Five seventy-four?
Mm-hmm.
Five eighty-one?
Do you have a five eighty?
Well, probably, but we don't, it's not loading yet.
Yeah, five eighty is another piece of blank land.
Okay.
That's, uh-
Okay.
There's no residence there, no house there.
Because Hitzel Terrace ends-
It already, it already ended.
Yep. All right, so we're gonna go-
Victoria should be next.
We're heading east, right?
One, one of the two little ones we're gonna do.
You got a couple of streets that came out from-
Yep, I'm just waiting for it to close back up again. There's two.
It's still working.
Uh, we have-
Lilac and Burnham.
Yep, Burnham, yep.
Okay. That's the Lilac.
Yep. We, we have, have you found Lilac or Burnham?
Mm-hmm, page five.
Yeah.
Okay, so on Lilac, we have ten?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Fifteen? No, sorry, forty?
Yes.
And forty-three?
How about sixty-three?
Yep, that's the next one. Sixty-three, that's the last one. Burnham, we have fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
Forty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Fifty-four?
Yeah.
Seventy?
Yeah.
Seventy-one?
Do you have a hundred?
One hundred is town of Rutland again, end of the street.
Is it? There's no dumping of anything on there?
We can send it to them, why not?
It starts over here.
Uh, no, it starts up here, it goes, it goes down and around and back around.
Nice, great.
Yeah.
Oh, my.
Yeah.
Okay, we're now on Victoria.
Yeah, it's the same page, we're there.
Same page, okay. All right, first off is number twenty-five?
Mm-hmm.
Fifty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Fifty-two?
Mm-hmm.
Eighty-one?
Yep.
One fourteen?
Yep.
Anybody got a bingo?
I was about to say.
One forty-three?
Mm-hmm.
One sixty-six? One seventy-nine?
Mm-hmm.
One ninety-seven?
Yep.
Two twenty?
How about two hundred?
Two hundred is-
Don't see a two hundred.
It's a fire district.
Fire district, yeah.
Fire district. Must be this?
Yes, there, there well.
So yes? Last number?
Two twenty.
Two thirty, two thirty-three?
Yep.
Two four oh four?
Yep.
Two sixty-nine?
Mm-hmm.
Two seventy-eight?
Mm-hmm.
Three eighty-nine?
Mm-hmm.
Three ten?
Yep.
Three twenty-three?
Yep.
Three thirty-six?
Mm-hmm.
Three forty-nine?
Yep.
Three ninety-six?
Mm-hmm.
Four oh seven?
We got four hundred.
Another vacant lot is four hundred.
Yeah, that's, that's four hundred, yeah.
Yep, okay, write it, yep.
But it, but it, a letter should be sent, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, so where are we? Four hundred, four thirty-seven?
Uh-
Four twenty?
No.
Nope.
We have four oh seven and four twenty.
You know, four oh seven, yes.
Those are- Those are both-
Four oh twenty.
Vacant lots, I must say, both of those.
Four oh seven has a house on it, at least.
Four oh seven and four twenty would be, I think that's a vacant lot.
Okay, but that's, that even notice.
The address is a Florence address.
That's okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.